Good evening, welcome to this evening's school board meeting. Monday, December 11th, 2017. And we've had two special meetings earlier. We just concluded our truth and taxation hearing. And now, at the start of this meeting, we'd like to do a spotlight, a recognition, the 2017 TIES exceptional teachers of the year nominees. And I think Kerry Ross is gonna present. Oh Kerry, are you presenting on the spotlight?
I am.
Alright.
My first.
Oh, no, we're gonna start with our spotlight, sorry.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Osai, it's my privilege to just give you a spotlight for our two TIES exceptional teachers of the year. Doesn't look like either one of them are here with us this evening, so I'll make my comments brief. This year, we are recognizing Trevor Paulson from the high school. He's an art tech teacher at the high school. He's been a St. Louis Park employee for 15 years. He does a lot of innovative programs using technology in his courses. And he loves to see a spark when students are learning something new, and trying something new, and investigating something new. Our elementary exceptional teacher of the year is Joanne Bonguards. Joanne is a parent in our school district. Her children attend here. And she's been with us for six years in various capacities at our elementary schools, including Peter Hobart, Susan Lindgren, and Aquila. She's currently the media center specialist at Aquila. And she too uses a lot of technology and innovative programming with the students that she has in her care at our elementary level. So, it's my pleasure to recognize them. Unfortunately, since they're not here tonight, I'm happy to pass on their certificates and any other comments that you'd like me to share with them.
Perfect, well, just a, it's always nice to get honored. And so, by an outside party like TIES, so just pass on our congratulations and thank yous.
I will.
So, alright, thanks Kerry. Alright, now we will approve the agenda. It is recommended that the school board approve the agenda for December 11th, 2017, as presented, but I think we have a change, so, someone wanna move that?
Yes, I would move approval of the agenda with item E moved up to, second one? To B, move that second.
Okay, so on the discussion items, five, E to move to, right before five, what we currently have is five B.
Mental health overview first, followed by the sale of referendum bonds.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Bruce, any comments on the agenda? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, that passes 6-0. Alright, next item is open forum. Oh, I forgot to read the agenda, actually. So let me, let me back up what we have on tonight's agenda. So it's the approval of the agenda, little rusty, I guess.
You're just ready to get a larger.
Over our superintendent's report, we have discussion items, we have mental health overview, PSI enrollment update, architect's contract presentation, building design discussion, sale of referendum bonds, which will, we will hear that presented earlier, lease purchase of staff laptops, WMEP notice of withdrawal, final levy certification, resolution for election combined polling places, policy development, the first reading of policy 427 workload limits for certain special education teachers, policy development, our third reading of policy 612.1, development of parental involvement Title I programs, and the second reading of 533 wellness. Then we have our consent agenda, on our action agenda, we have a final levy certification, architect contract approval, sale of referendum bonds, and lease purchase of staff laptops. The next item would be WMEP notice of withdrawal. Policy development, third reading approval of policy 612.1, development of parental involvement Title I programs, which we have renamed, parent guardian and family engagement policies for Title I programs. I don't think, oh yeah, second reading, policy development, 533 wellness. And we have an employment contract approval, technical employees 2017, 18, and 2018, 2019. We have an employment contract approval with the Park Association of Teachers for 20, contract years 2017 through 2019. We have the approval of resolution for combined polling places. Then we have communications and transmittals, followed by adjournment. So that's what's on our agenda, which we have now already amended, voted on, and approved. So, stay tuned, and I'm sure we'll see y'all here about midnight tonight with us, so appreciate that. Okay, that brings us to open forum. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to address the board on a matter? Okay, seeing none or hearing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Osai.
Good evening Chair Yaros and members of the board. For my report this evening, I would like to share a couple of informational items connected to the strategic plan. Connected to strategy for, our facility strategy in our strategic plan, we have, we've started the process of developing project teams at each site. Tom Bravo and I have started meeting with sites to highlight the next steps of the process. You'll hear more details this evening from Sarah Thompson and Tom Bravo about where we are in the process. And it's an exciting time for us. Tom and I have met with three different schools up to this point, and there's a great deal of energy and excitement about the facility improvements here in St. Louis Park public schools. The last two things that I wanna share with you are connected to our strategic plan as well. And this Friday, I had an opportunity to attend the AMSD conference with a team of people from our district. At the conference, we had the opportunity to learn about strategies connected to the Reimagine Minnesota Collective Education Plan. I was honored to have the opportunity to present on one of the strategies at the conference, and the strategy that I presented on was connected to elevating student voice and leadership. So, I came prepared with a different presentation for tonight, but I was reading the echo online this morning, and came across a couple of stories that I thought would be fitting to highlight as part of my superintendent's report. This particular student, Jack Orstrowski, an 11th grader, you may have seen it recently in the Sun Sailor, scored a 36 on his ACT this fall. Jack's accomplishments, you know, were covered by one of our students, Samaya Mohammed, and it just reminded me of our mission outcome that states, "Students will achieve the knowledge, skills, passion, attitudes to meet or exceed rigorous academic standards." Jack's and many of the other of our students' success here in St. Louis Park on college entrance exams are certainly a point of celebration, but it's also a sobering reminder that we still have a lot of work to do to ensure that we're not having demographically predictable results. I'm confident that our strategic plan and the deliverables that are connected to our strategies and our strategic plan will move us closer to this reality. The last piece that I would like to share connected to our strategic plan, and also connected to an article thinking about elevating student voice in the Sun, not only, not in the Sun Sailor, excuse me, in the echo, was this article from a student by the name of Ruby Stillman on the Parquettes. I learned over the last couple of weeks that the Parquettes have had a long tradition here in St. Louis Park. And as I look around the room, I see Linda nodding her head, she may have been a Parquet here as a, as a student here at the high school. But, the point that I wanna make here is that, when these two former alumni, I think they were Parquettes maybe in the 60s, when they came back, they came back with some very traditional Parquet dance moves and routines. And it wasn't until these advisors made the experience for our students more culturally relevant, that they saw an increase in participation. And it just really speaks to the importance of relevance and engagement and the impact that that has on energizing and enhancing the spirits of our students. Just lastly, I would, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity, I know, I'm sure during communications and transmittals, others will share as well. But, I just wanted to thank two of our outgoing board members. This is their last, I guess, board meeting here with us, and I just wanted to thank both Jim and Bruce for your leadership here in St. Louis Park over the last 16 years. And I'm confident that you will continue to be involved and support our schools moving the work of our strategic plan forward for many years to come, so, and I know that the rest of our colleagues up here will have a chance to say something at the end, but thank you all for your leadership. And that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Alright, thank you Superintendent Osai. Moving on to our discussion items, we're having a mental health overview presentation this evening. Tammy, are you kicking it off? Okay. Alright, Tammy Reynolds will present.
Good evening Chair Yaros, Superintendent Osai, and board members. I'm Tammy Reynolds, Director of Special Services for the school district. And we decided the best people to share are the mental health services and approaches here in St. Louis Park, are our team of fantastic social workers. We have two elementary, we have Michelle Bryant from Susan Lindgren, and Dana Baumeister from Aquila. We have Cara Fahey from the middle school, and Daniel Perez from the high school. So, a representation from most of our age levels. And I will hand it over to them, I'll stick around to help with questions as well, though. So we're just gonna kinda go through the age group and start with elementary school. So at, we're just gonna talk a little bit about how many social workers we have at each building first. So at Aquila, I'm the full-time social worker there, we just have one social worker. And then Peter Hobart also has one FTE, Susan Lindgren one FTE, and then Park Spanish Immersion has a .8 FTE. And new this year, we have a district-wide social worker who's primarily housed at Peter Hobart, and she's there 18 hours per week, so it ends up being close to 1.2.
Sorry to interrupt, you might just pull on the microphone maybe a little closer a bit?
Yes, sorry. So we do a wide range of things in our schools, and some of those things are, we provide friendship groups, or different groups related to mental health, emotion regulation, like anger management types of groups, things that help with behavior changes. We also do grief groups, grief and loss, as well as behavior support throughout the building, parent consultation, teacher consultation.
I would just add, it depends on the year and the need. Last year, I did a psychosocial group with a group of students who had parents that struggling with bipolar, and educating them about the disease and medication, and a support group really for them to come and speak if mom and dad weren't doing so well. So every year is different, and it's based on need.
I would also add that we do risk assessments, so we assess for mental health risk, whether there is a potential for self-harm, if a student is reporting that they may have thoughts of harming themselves or other people. Some other types of mental health services that we have in the elementary school is, schools are that we have a school counselor. This year, she has split between all four elementary schools. In previous years, she had been, there had been two, and they were, they would split between two schools. We also have a relationship with Relate Counseling, which is based in Minnetonka, but they provide in-school therapy at the elementary schools. Typically, a therapist is at our school for about one day a week, at least that, one to two.
It's kinda divided up by hours, so say at Susan Lindgren, we have 14 hours a week. And they are funded part, in part by a grant through the state of Minnesota. So if we have a family that has a huge deductible, or they don't have insurance that can help cover the cost, this would be a very appropriate referral for a student to meet with the Relate therapist. The other thing that comes into play as well is transportation. If mom and dad can't have, or don't have the means to pick up the child to bring them to a therapy appointment, we often utilize Relate as a way to make it more convenient to get the student what they need and keep them at school.
So it's very helpful with removing some of those barriers that can get in the way of being able to get to a therapist in the community. We also partner with Park Niclet. They have a Growing Through Grief program, which is also, I believe, a grant, but it's, all the services are provided through Park Niclet. So if we had a student, or students going through grief and loss, they would come to the school and provide a grief, grief counseling, either individually or in a small group.
I would just add that they've been very supportive and helpful when we've lost a student in helping, not just with the staff, but being a resource and support for students onsite.
Another great partnership that we have is with Jewish Family and Children's Services, and they provide many types of services for students. Oftentimes, they help with referrals to community agencies, they, they have a nice position because they can go to people's homes and meet with them in the home or in the community. They help bridge that gap between home and school, so they're a really great partner to have, both for basic needs types of referrals, food, housing, clothing, but also for mental health, helping people connect with those types of services in the community as well.
So I had a question about that. ACT, it was, as I recall, Aquila-Cedar Manor together, but, so, did they pick up another school, or are they district-wide, or what, with the program, or what happened?
They're now district-wide. And they, they changed their name, and then no one knew what they were being called, so they decided to go back to being called ACT, 'cause that's what they were known by, so, but they're district-wide.
Although, just for elementary, so they, they stop after elementary.
So is that, did we get, but did we pick up more students then, that are, that have been involved, that they've touched more students because it's, all of our elementary, before it was just the two schools, I thought, so.
Yep. And the other thing that comes into play is the siblings, 'cause a lot of times, it's a family where they have older brothers or sisters, or younger brothers and sisters, so.
And the last resource that we had up there is, we have a school psychologist. And the school psychologist mainly does consultation with teachers and special ed evaluations, so they're often part of that evaluation process to, kinda deciding whether someone qualifies for special ed or not.
As I look at the numbers, the, the ratio is about one social worker to 530 students, something like that.
Yes.
Now, I don't know if you count the school psychologist in that, or how it should be, but is, is there a, kind of a standard number that we, we should be looking for, where the, the ratio should be either lower or higher than that?
I would, I don't know if you wanna speak to that, I would say yes. I don't think anything is set in stone. And again, everything's based on need, year to year. I know my work has been impacted by the cut of, or the, the one-year leave that Ann Moore, our school counselor, is on this year. And I don't know, Tammy, if you wanna speak to that more?
Well, I would just add, I think from a provider perspective, and what you know you could and would want to do with students, is there's always room for more. And at the same time, when I compare us to some other school districts, we're also rather rich, so there's two ways to look at that, but I get that there's never enough.
So my name's Cara Fahey, I'm the social worker at the middle school. So, I just talk about position, so I am a 1.0, I split my time between halftime special education, halftime regular education. And this year, my administrator's also hired a .2 social worker to come and do support groups here at the middle school. So I, there's about 1.2 to 1,030 students at our middle school. Pretty similar things that we do at the middle school for social work that elementary and high school, I think you'll find. And just highlight a couple of things, so, groups at the middle school, again, it's very dependent on the year and the need for our students. This year, we have a pretty high population of students who've been adopted, so that's been a popular support group for our school. We often do an anxiety group for students, usually yearly, as we find that's kind of a big piece at our middle school level. And then we also are currently supporting students who have parents who have chemical or addiction issues within our building. And then other pieces that we prevent, or provide crisis intervention for our students, a lot of behavior management. I do a little bit of case management for our special education students, a lot of teacher consultation, parent consultation, and mediations for our students in addition to seeing students individually and in groups. So onsite services at the middle school, so we do have a school counselor, actually applied for a grant two years ago, I think. And so, to hire a school counselor, so our school counselor does a lot of building-wide initiatives at the middle school, looking particularly at college and career readiness. And then, they also coordinate 504s for us, and coordinated this year, a red ribbon reek around drug and alcohol use in our building. We also partner with Relate Counseling at the middle school. We are lucky enough to have our counselor provide therapy to our students three days a week, so it makes a huge impact for us at the middle school. We also partner with Park Niclet for a Growing Through Grief group, again, for students who experience grief and loss in our district, and also a huge resource when we have crisis events at our school. We are unique in the fact that we also have a partnership with Park Niclet Foundation to provide what we call No Obstacles to Well-Being. So it's a totally free program that's unique in the way that it provides mental health service via telemedicine. So students are seen over kind of a big video conferencing technology, and that is at our school two days a week. It's intended to reduce barriers for our students who have mental health, so it's free, and they don't have, parents don't have to provide transportation to therapy outside of school. We do have a school psychologist that again provides consultation and special education evaluations. We also partner with Move Forward, which was formerly Teens Alone, and they come into our school and provide individual counseling, and some years have provided groups for our students as well. And new this year, we have a partnership with Centro Guzman for our Latinx students, so they come in once a week and provide a group for our boys and our girls on cultural identity. That's what we have at the middle school.
I have a second question. The Relate Counseling, is that like the type of therapy they get if they work with a, a private therapist outside of school?
Yes, it is, yep. So it's just like going to an agency outside of school, they are just based in our school. And so they, at the middle's level, they see students for about half an hour, once a week for half an hour, I don't know, is that about, roughly similar at the elementary and high school?
I just wanted to clarify, so the Relate services are provided through a co-located service model, so we have a co-location agreement with that agency in order to allow those outside therapists to come in here and work with our students in school. So, it's a model that is well-known and many school districts use it, but it's important that we have those boundaries set up, so that we have a definition of who's able to come in and work with our students.
Okay, so sometimes they could, the therapist could bill their services to insurance then?
Yeah, so they are grant-based, but we also have students who have insurance who they would bill for through insurance if our families do have insurance.
And that Park Niclet program, the tele-counseling or whatever it is, is that, is that a temporary thing funded by grants, and how's that going?
Yeah, thanks for asking. So Park Niclet Foundation completely funds that for us. So I, it's through fundraising of their own, they've generously given to us with really no expectations. This is our third year in the program, it's going quite well. We typically see about 15 students a year through this program. Yeah, it's a great program.
Hello, my name is Daniel Perez. I work as a high school social worker, and this is one of the disadvantages of being too tall, but I'll be down here. So, at the high school, we have 3.5 FTEs dedicated for social work supports. The breakdown is 1.2 special ed, 1.8 regular ed, I'm a full-time social worker, and then .5 chemical health. And the student enrollment, as of today, it's about 1470 students, so almost 1,500 students. The services are gonna be pretty similar, so I won't be very repetitive, but they're targeted to our student population and the age that we work with. Here at the high school, we have the bar program, Building Assets, Reducing Risks. And so that for me, and Marley, who's another general ed social worker, and Carly, who is a special ed social worker, and Kirsten, who's the chemical health specialist slash special ed social worker, that means a lot of referrals, because we collaborate with teachers on a weekly basis, we meet with them, and they just kinda tell us what's happening in our students' lives. We do a lot of mediation meetings with them, both students and teachers. We also do a lot of support groups, they vary depending on the year, depending on the population. We also do a lot of health assessments, suicide risk assessments. We provide a lot of behavioral controls sometimes, when there's fights and, and issues like that. And there's a lot of collaboration with families. For me, I do sit in a lot of meetings with families, or invite them to come lots of the time. Last year, I was the ninth grade social worker, and a lot of parents were meeting with me and calling me, talking about their kids' needs. So that was pretty nice. In terms of onsite services, here at the high school, we have four counselors, one per grade, ninth, 11th, or 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th. And so, that's a huge support for us, because we collaborate a lot. They're able to provide also mental health supports and services. And like the middle school and the elementary schools, we also have, you know, outside services coming into the high school, like Relate, Move Forward, My Health, and, am I forgetting somebody else? I believe that's everybody. And we also partner up with the school psychologist for special ed evals and consultation. And like Cara said, at the middle school, we also have a partnership with Centro Guzman, providing services to our Latino students. This part, I will do, it's kinda unarmed, an extension to all the schools in our district, because students from any grade can actually be serviced by RSVP and POS, but we have a 1.0 special ed social worker working there. And so RSVP stands for Responsible Solutions to Violence Prevention, and that's typically a place for our students who've been suspended for a short term, whether it's one day, three days, five days. And, and so they're able to get homework and specialized tutoring and, and education by a special ed teacher with a school social worker as well. And then, our POS program, it's a longer place tournament, or a longer place for students to be. It's a program alternative utilizing special education, and that can serve students for up to 45 days, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And so, like I said, we can serve any of our students in our schools from, you know, kindergarten to 12th grade, and, and it's a partnership model between a teacher and a special ed social worker. And once again, we do a lot of problem, problem solving, we do a lot of referrals, we partner up with STEP for any kind of service or need that our families have. This year, I'm working a lot with homeless students, kiddos who don't have access to winter clothing, food, you name it. And, yeah, we do a lot of coordination of services with parents and, and their home environment.
Kerry.
So Daniel, one of the things that we've had going on for a long time is the bird feeder program. So the students work to provide the backpacks of food, but in order to retain privacy and dignity, the students who run the bird feeder provide the supplies, and you get them to the right kid, is that how that works?
Yes. So in the counseling office, we have a half-sheet of paper that kiddos sign, they just write their initials, so DP for me, right? They don't even have to say their name. They turn it in to one of us, or even the administrative assistants, and then we, we give them to the bird feeder administrators, and then they're able to provide backpacks or whatever food items the kiddos need. And then they're brought to the counseling office, typically on a Friday noon-ish time, and kiddos are supposed to pick it up by the end of the day. I do believe the program has expanded, that now kiddos can come and pick up backpacks of food or bags every single day of the week, so they don't, they don't have to wait until Friday. And so that's how we're able to kinda preserve their identity and not have their information out, you know, out anywhere.
Just as a follow-up, could you talk about, how is the, is there a gap between at least the kids who show need and, and the supplies, or are we able to fulfill the demand through that program, or?
I would say like Tammy's. I would say like Tammy said, the needs continue to grow. And I think I'm very on task about asking for snacks for my own office because I have kiddos coming in when they're missing out lunch, when they can't afford it, they forgot their lunch. And typically I'm out in a day and a half, you know? And so the supply cannot keep up with the demand, unfortunately.
We never say no to donations.
Well, I know, and I'm wondering, and I'm wondering if we've explored like, you know, STEP is, you know, right around the corner and if there's a way to, and maybe we are doing something there, but maybe there is a supply, something that could happen to make sure that we're more stocked, I don't know. Bruce.
I had one more comment on the numbers just because I was keeping track as we went through. And at the middle school, if we, if I count the psychologist, it's about 1 to 468, again right around that 500 number. At the high school, the 3.5 to 1470 is about 1 to 420. I don't know, in my reading somewhere on where these kinds of services ought to fit in, the number I have in my head is like 1 to 500 was like the national average. And someone who's recommending it ought to be half that. And so those are the numbers that I've seen. But if you're seeing that we are meeting the needs, I certainly don't see it as rich. I definitely don't see it that way. But I, again, if we are meeting the needs, then that's good. So thank you.
I would just say we're trying, we're doing our best to meet the needs.
And I would add that a number of funding sources come into play for all of these positions. So like school social workers are divided equally, I'm sorry, school psychologists are divided equally among the district. So 0.5 at the high school, 0.5 at middle school. And at the same time, when we, we have various places that are funding these positions. So it's hard to say what's, that is apples to apples, I guess, is what I'm saying right now, particularly at the high school.
Nancy.
Yeah, I want to thank you for all the good work that you are doing with the resources that we're, we've been able to provide. And I'm hopeful, Tammy, that there's a way that these grants and other outside services that help our kids are able to be thanked in some, maybe at the end of the school year, however you do that, so they know how appreciative we are of their added assistance to us. I'm curious about, and I don't want to take a lot of, we could take the whole session tonight on this actually for my interest, but we've got a long agenda. I'm curious about how you find kids who need your services. I'm kind of have some assumptions that it might be a parent or guardian or a teacher or a sign that you put up depending on the age. I'm curious about what the differences between what you do as social workers versus what the counselors do. And it strikes me that you're trying to serve more needs in groups because you just don't have time to do as much individual work as you might like. Am I close to right on any of that?
I would say that in the elementary schools, the school counselor does a lot more with whole class instruction. I do some, I'm not sure if my colleagues do, but they do try to do more preventative teaching. As far as referrals, they come from parents, they come from teachers, they come from previous years. If I had a student in a group last year and they still had some work to do. So it kind of varies where the referrals come in from.
At the high school, every year, we try to go into classrooms, especially for blocks, so ninth grade and 10th grade, and introduce ourselves, both the 10th grade counselor or ninth grade counselor and the social worker assigned to that grade. We try to go in and introduce ourselves and say what we do and the services we provide. And a lot of the times it's kiddos coming to us, parents, family members, teachers, you name it. Just this, no, last week, I had an email from a parent who actually has a kiddo in fifth grade. And so the kiddo goes to PSI. And the parent messaged me and Marley because she found our contact information on our website and said, hey, there's a, there's a ninth grader riding on the bus without a winter coat. Can you find out who they are? So sometimes it's just community members, other parents.
Yeah, and I will say at the middle school, it's pretty similar. Our school counselor does more building-wide and also focuses on college and career readiness more so. So that leaves us more with kind of the mental health aspects. I would say teachers are a great resource. We also have a dean model at the middle school, which I failed to mention earlier. So they are a great source for providing referrals as they see students for discipline. And parents are also a great referral as our students, they often can self-identify, so.
Joe. I have a couple of things, trying to keep it brief, but how do you work together district-wide? Do you have any like professional learning opportunities district-wide to get together and brainstorm ideas and that kind of thing?
So we typically meet monthly, the elementary school social workers, the school social workers that are, fall under the special education, their FTEs falls under special education. We had the opportunity on the first of December to meet that afternoon. Some of us, some of us at the secondary level met separately. So we do our best to connect. I know at the end of the year, we connect with the middle school, with Jason Bowle, Cara, a few others to share information for students that are moving on to the next grade level from fifth to sixth to kind of keep a watchful eye or make an extra effort to connect with someone that we're concerned about. I don't know if you guys want to add?
Just one more thing, this might be a topic for another time, or you could get back to me on it, but I'd also be curious to what kind of professional development the teachers get to like recognize mental health issues and that kind of thing. I could maybe get back to me on that. My understanding is that maybe the state has very minimal requirements that teachers have to have each year and that might not be all grades, maybe preschool teachers don't need to have any, so I'd just be curious.
So as part of our relicensure, we have certain areas that have to be covered in order to get our license renewed through MDE. I forget if that's a couple of hours. It is a limited amount. But I would say, and I'll only speak for Susan Lindgren, if the staff have an interest, then the principal has always been good about identifying what the topic they want to cover. We cover it in a staff meeting. We give feedback to Carrie Ross for the professional development days. We've done a lot of work over the last few years on trauma and working with students that come to us with historical trauma, homelessness, chronic homelessness, some of those other topics that we're seeing a lot more of in the last few years. So I would feel with the time that we have to spend, and I'm speaking personally, I feel that it's a very generous amount compared to all the other things that we need to accomplish, if that makes sense.
Just briefly, I'm interested, at the high school, are they still doing peer counseling? There was a group that was together for years and now I'm not sure if we're still doing it. I think that's a powerful and valuable tool.
Thank you for asking. Yes, it is happening, natural helpers. I've been training them. This is my third year, so I've been training them for the last three years. And I know that Marley, the other social worker, has been more the coach for this year and previous years too. And so we continue to do that. And so that's going pretty well.
I just want to congratulate you on that because I know it's helpful to the kids, but it's really helpful to the kids who participate in the program.
Great. Are you done or is there more to?
I think you guys got a copy of this, right? Yeah.
I think with their questions, they have sort of covered it.
Yeah.
Any remaining questions?
No. Thanks so much.
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate it, all your work. And I'm sure there's, you have many challenging days, but we appreciate the work that you do, so thanks so much. All right. Next item on our agenda is the sale of referendum bonds. Sandy, are you going to present with Jody or both? Okay, you'll, all right, thanks.
Well, I have Jody Zesba from Ellers with me tonight. We're going to present a resolution to the board. We had a pre-meeting with the board to explain some of the financing options available and have a resolution before the board for approval. And Jody's going to go through some news to determine what that approval is going to look like.
Thank you, Sandy. Good evening. So congratulations again on the passage of the bond referendum. Very exciting. I know there's going to be a lot of fantastic changes coming for the district and that'll be great. We did prepare a pre-sale report, so we spoke at an earlier meeting about an option for issuing all of the authority now or perhaps splitting the issue. And the, seems like the consensus with the board was that moving forward with a single issue right now in light of the favorable interest rates makes the most sense. We did a little bit of sensitivity analysis and discussed that, but we'll have lower costs of issuance by moving forward with one issue. The interest rates right now are still well below the average over the recent past and chances that they go up are certainly, are certainly good with the volatility that we've seen in the market in the past and potential in the future. So we did prepare a pre-sale report and I'll maybe just highlight a few things on that. We're planning to move forward and the resolution that you have before you tonight contains a dollar amount of $94,885,000 in terms of the bond issue. We certainly know that the voters approved issuance of up to $100,900,000, but we're expecting to get a premium. And your bond attorney limits the deposit to your construction fund to the authorized amount less cost of issuance. So that's the parameter that we work within. And so because we're expecting to get a large premium, that is the limit of the bonds that you'll be able to issue. So you'll likely have less bonds outstanding than what your voters approved, which is fine. We'll still have the maximum amount deposited to your construction fund that's allowed. There will be, the term of the bonds is 20 years, as talked about prior to the election. And there will be a call date 10 years out, so February 1st of 2028. Those maturities and later can be called or prepaid. And generally, we do do that to take advantage of the lower interest rates that will likely be available at that point in time for those maturities and pass along some cost savings to your taxpayers then. You guys have done that in the recent past and will continue to monitor these bonds as well as your remaining outstanding bonds. We will move forward with a rating by Moody's Rating Agency. Right now, you have a nice high AA2 rating, so we'll hope to maintain that. And then we will, on the day of sale, which is scheduled for your board meeting on January 22nd, we'll solicit competitive bids and bring those forward to the board that evening. We have included a proposed debt schedule on page four of the pre-sale report. So you'll see the pre-sale report review this evening along with the passage of the resolution. We'll get the official statement ready then for your bond sale, like a prospectus. And then we'll have the conference with the rating agency probably the week of January 8th. Again, we'll take bids and present those bids to you at your meeting on January 22nd. Also included with report is an updated sources and uses schedule. Each of the schedules that I'll refer to tonight were needed for your review and comment that you submitted to the Department of Education. So these are simply updates to the schedules that were included in that document. So again, you'll see that we have the authorized amount at $100,900,000, but we're likely to issue less than that dollar amount, assuming we get a premium. And we're thinking we'll get a pretty significant premium on these bonds. And then you'll see the other sources and uses associated with it, again, updated for our pre-sale estimates as compared to the election. The debt service schedule on page six then, you'll see a little higher coupon rates and those are because they're offering you a premium. They will be paying you a little bit more than the face amount of the bonds. And again, that can be deposited into your construction fund, but to a limit. And that's why we get limited as to the dollar amount of the bonds that can be issued. Finally, the updated detailed debt plan as well as the estimated tax rates over the life of the bond issue. And there are only five more years of payments on your existing debt. So for those five years, we'll have a little bit higher debt service tax levy, which was planned on and communicated to the public as part of the referendum election. That's what the tax impact estimates were based on. But if everything plays out the way that it should with respect to your debt, you will have a decline then in that debt service tax rate after five years. So it will go down a bit as compared to what taxpayers will be paying in the first five years of the bond issue. Questions on the overview of the debt?
Jody, you got this down. So you just have to help me a little bit.
No problem.
I mean, so the approval was for 1.9 million. How much less are we going to have?
100. 100,900,000.
Yeah, 100. How much less are we going to have to work with is what I want to know after all the costs or whatever are taken out? I wasn't following that.
So let me point you then to the sources and uses schedule on page five. And the whole, the bottom line really related to everything is that net available for project cost amount, if you look at that number in bold within the uses section, is at about $106 million. And we still plan to be at that dollar amount, a little bit higher than. Because we will deposit the premium, you'll see the big premium that we're planning to receive from the underwriter. So right now, that's estimated at almost $7 million. We'll be able to deposit that into your construction fund. But we can't, we can't issue the bonds at that full amount and deposit, we can't deposit more than the authorized amount by your voters, less cost of issuance in your construction fund. So that's why we end up lowering the dollar amount of the issue.
So the dollar amount's less, but it'll be made up with the interest because we'll get the, is that what you're saying?
It'll be made up with the premium that the underwriter gives you. They give you additional cash on the day of sale. And each, each of the underwriters will give us a little bit different bid. So the dollar amount will likely not be that magic $94,885,000, but it likely will be less than what the voters authorized.
So, so that's great. Instead of paying the extra, selling $100 million with the bonds, we sell 94 million?
Yes.
And they're paying us cash because they love our bonds so much. They could sell. All right.
And generally, when we put the review and comment schedule together, we assume no premium. I mean, there have been times when the market didn't have premium bids and we actually had discount bids. But in this interest rate environment, in this market right now, we are tending to still get pretty high premium bids. So the dollar amount, again, on the day of sale, we'll take a look at the bid that the lowest bidder gives to us. And their premium will be likely different from all of the other bidders, but we'll take all of that into consideration and make sure that we meet that constraint of the authorized amount less cost of issuance deposited into the construction fund.
Any other questions? All right, well, we really appreciate it. We're looking forward to a quick sale and here in January. And hopefully the interest rates will hold and per your report, they were trending down, although they'll spike last Friday, but still less than it was the week before.
Absolutely, yep.
So we'll just kind of monitor that and sale date can't get here soon enough, I guess.
Exactly.
All right, well, thanks so much. We appreciate it and look forward to working with you when the sale time comes in January.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Right, thanks. Next item on the agenda is our PSI enrollment update. Linda Stanley and Corey Maslowsky will present on that.
Yay. Are we ready?
So Corey, while you're getting set up, I just, sorry, Linda, you were just ready to start and I'm going to jump in here.
Go ahead.
But I just want to, I don't want it to go unrecognized. Kudos to your fifth grade student who recognized a need on a bus and following one of our beliefs, you know, that we can all contribute to the well-being of others, spoke up and did the right thing. So kudos.
We have 510 amazing students.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Osai. My name is Linda Stanley and this is Corey Maslowsky, the principal at Park Spanish Immersion. We're here to report on the results of policy 545, Park Spanish Immersion Admission Policy had on enrollment at the school for the 1617 school year. enrollment at the school for the 1617 school year. And here are some of the observations. In February of 2017, we had 515 potential kindergarteners that could have come to school in the fall. 188 at Aquila, 146 at Peter Hobart and 181 at Susan Lindgren. And the number at Aquila has been going up in the last few years. Lotteries were held in February for both St. Louis Park residents and open enrolled students. And the mission of St. Louis Park students included 33 students from the Aquila attendance area, 30 students from the Peter Hobart attendance area and 19 students from the Susan Lindgren attendance area. The number of students did go up slightly this year, about 4% from last year. So that shows those numbers. And the enrollment that started out the school year or as of February, we had 19 students from the designated seats in St. Louis Park and those were based on families that qualified for federal free reduced lunch subsidies. 32 siblings, students that were current, had siblings currently in kindergarten through fourth grade, one open enrollment student, then 31 students from the St. Louis Park lottery, six students of staff, five were open enrolled and one was from St. Louis Park and four students in the Choices Years Program. And those are families that live in Minneapolis and qualify for free reduced lunch. So we started out with 93 students.
Linda, so that 19, we never filled it. We have 20 spots as I recall.
We had 20 spots and we didn't fill them.
We didn't fill one. Okay.
And we did lose a few. And so then two weeks before school starts, we fill them from the waitlist. Sometimes families, they get the application and they just fill it in and aren't really sure that that's what they wanted.
When you say you fill them from the waitlist, is it from the designated area still or is it just anyone on the waitlist now?
Yep.
If there, because there's room?
Yeah, we save those spots for two weeks so that if families do move in, that they have that opportunity to get into the school. And then two weeks before, we have to start filling it so that we have the number of students in there that we need. And that's per the policy.
And Linda, prior to the last revision of the policy, what would happen is if there, if there, I'm going to make up a number, if there were 10 students from those designated seats at the time of the lottery, immediately it would go to the other, the other pot lottery. So it's really helped us. It's really been advantageous to our community and to our families to keep those spots open until two weeks before school starts.
This year we had 169 applications from St. Louis Park families. It was about 32% of the families applied for this school. It went up from last year. And in February, we had 86 students on that waitlist and as of November, we have 55 students on the waitlist. Those seats, we go through them to fill the vacant spots, families move. When we're calling in August, parents have made the decision to go to one of our other schools, don't want to change their mind or they've paid to go to a non-public school or somewhere else. So it's not that we've taken 31 new kids and we've just gone through that many students on the waitlist. We had 42 applications from open enrollment received by the deadline. We took the one open enrollment student and end up with 32 students on the waitlist. And this shows the waitlist for the last several years and last year was a very unusual year. So that number was very low. We ended up going through that whole waitlist, but now we're, the numbers are back up about where they have been in past years. And this shows past years for the waitlist for open enrollment students. There was a big spike, 10-11, and then the policy is in effect where siblings don't get preference. So families have made other choices or they just choose not to apply.
Policy, you mean, you mean the open enrollment policy for siblings?
Part of the policy is siblings do not get, automatically get in for open enrollment.
That was.
Correct. Oh, sorry. Yep. This shows the last few years, the waitlisted students. How many students end up attending one of the four elementary schools? So out of the 86, 62 students stayed within St. Louis Park schools, which was quite a high number this last year. So, and then kids go to non-public, they're held back a year, open enrolled out or to a charter school, moved and then some students, we just never know what happened to them. They just have moved on and we can't track where they've gone.
It's pretty good tracking though if there's only four unknown this year. That's a good job.
Well, I think that's pretty good. And it's hard. Families move and they don't tell us and so we don't know that they moved. So I can't, I mean, I could say they moved, but they didn't. We just don't know where they are. Or there are families that just won't say where they're going. You know, they feel, they just don't want to share that information. So the number of students staying in St. Louis Park at the other schools is really going up, which is really good.
So quick question. So you had mentioned previously the anomaly that was last year.
Yes.
Do you have any attributable causes for that or, I mean, it looks like maybe it's like what it was.
It was big.
Eight, 10 years ago.
The numbers were lower. That was one thing. So the number of students that applied was lower. And we had a lot more spaces for the 20 designated seats to fill. So I had, I think it was 15, I had 15 spaces to fill two weeks before school started. And families just didn't want to change where they were going. They'd made their decisions, they'd gone, they've shown their child where they were going to go to school. They felt very comfortable and wanted to stay there. And so when you're calling that late, that's what's going to happen and that's why we went through that waitlist. And then the waitlist was lower because fewer families applied.
We filled up the class though, right?
Oh, yeah.
But you cleared out the waitlist.
Yep. Yep.
Linda, was that class, and you may not know this, but I'm curious if that class of students district wide was a smaller class? I mean, sometimes they're larger, sometimes they're smaller. I'm just curious if that.
I believe it was a little smaller. The potential number of kids was a little smaller. I think it's a, kudos to the district that they want to, once they've decided to go to Peter Hobart, Aquila, Susan Lindgren, that they want to stay and go there. And this is just kind of showing how many people or students from the different attendance areas have applied and up attending Park Spanish Immersion. And it's staying, you know, pretty steady at Aquila, Susan Lindgren. There was an increase at Peter Hobart this year for families applying, but otherwise it's staying pretty even across over the last few years. This shows socioeconomic status at Park Spanish Immersion by grade based on June 17. Kindergarten percentage was down. That had a lot to do with last year, not filling it up with those 20 spaces. That will drop that number, but it's still higher than it has, than it had been before the policy went into effect.
Linda, just looking at that, so that's.
Where you went off the waitlist and you filled up five students from the designated district, right?
We ended up with more, but we filled it in with families that didn't, that didn't qualify. And that will lower that number.
Well, right, but, well, so is that, is that, wasn't that first grade though? Wouldn't they be in first grade now?
No, they're in kindergarten.
Oh, they are?
No.
Okay. But still, the number's still a lot higher than.
It's higher than it was before, as we'll see on the next slide. As you see, up to 2004, before any outreach was done at all, the percentage at the school was six, six and a half percent for free and reduced lunch. Then we started an outreach where we were going out to, we were having information nights for families all over the district, days, nights, trying to encourage people to apply. And, well, it went up a little. And then we started the designated seats where you had to qualify for free reduced lunch and it went up a lot. And it's since gone up. Last, again, last year was a drop, but otherwise it's been in the 20%.
Linda, was it in, was it in that 2009, 10 that we began to hold those seats until the two weeks before school?
So 910, yeah, was, we started it.
It's nice to see a policy have the effect you're hoping for.
Yes. I was happy because.
Do we still do the outreach?
Because we targeted a group that we wanted to target and were able to center it on that group versus an area, because we couldn't shrink down further without, you know, picking certain areas. So it didn't work that way. And then this shows a comparison at the four elementary schools of percentage of students that qualify for free or reduced lunch based on the 16, everything is based on the 1617 school year. Information for 1718 is all still preliminary. We have many more submissions to do, a lot more time for cleanup. I will say the free and reduced lunch is going down in the district. And last year, at the end of the year, district wide, it was 36.2% of the families qualified, district wide, K-12. And this shows special ed at the four elementary schools, percentage of students, which I think is staying about the same. And this shows limited English proficiency at the four schools, which is staying pretty much right on target over the last few years. Here's showing the percentages of, the blue is percentage of students of color and the red is white, not of Hispanic background at each of the elementary schools. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Maslowski.
Thank you, Linda, for all that you do to make this happen every year. It's a privilege to work with you. For lateral entry force students, we keep the original waitlist until the end of first grade, at which point Linda then sends out information to families to determine whether or not they want to remain on the waitlist moving forward. We view being a public school, you know, we want all families to have the opportunity to attend. And so therefore, we, we want to make sure that all families have the opportunity to attend. And so what happens is I'll invite families in and we do a tour of the school. We meet with, we meet with the family, take a look at where the students at, but ultimately it is the parents' decision. We currently have openings in grades two through five and we do, because we don't have as many students coming into the school as in some of our other schools, we do have new family initiatives. And so therefore, our PTO has a buddy program, for lack of a better way of saying it. And our social worker also will meet with families on a regular basis as well as students and invite them to invite students to come up to her office and make some new friendships and have the opportunity to talk about changes and coming to the school. Sometimes people view it as a test in coming to PSI, but that is not the case in any way, shape or form. We literally go to the first person on the waitlist and call them and say, we have a spot. Would you like to come in and, and tour with us and, and have a conversation? And that, that process has worked really well for us and it seems to work for families. Sometimes questions come about, you know, can we transition students into second grade and the third grade? And yes, we can. And we have a number of students over the years that have come to our school from other schools in the district and from other immersion schools. Some, some students who are bilingual, who are Hispanic, who speak Spanish at home. And so we've made a fair number of transitions for students that have been in second grade, third grade. So it is possible, but I always ask families to ensure that you give it, you know, give it, give it a try. Don't, don't say, well, we'll try it for a couple of months and see how it goes. We really want, want people to think of it for the long haul and, and coming over. And we had, despite the snow and ice and rain, we had a, a good turnout last week at our immersion information night where we had student speakers, we had parent speakers as well as staff. And we give monthly tours. We'd love to have people in our community come in and see our school. So please call our office if anyone's interested. But we are proud to be a part of St. Louis Park Public Schools and, and really proud of the good work that's going on at PSI. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thanks so much. Appreciate the annual presentation. So, all right. Next item on our agenda is the architect's contract presentation. It's like Sandy's, Tom and Sandy are going to present on that?
Tom will present.
Tom. Okay.
Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Osi. Now that we've got past the point where the voters said yes and we're moving ahead, we want to now move ahead with the selection of an architect. We have been working with the Cunningham Group for the last few months on the pre-refereendum and we would like to move ahead and hire them for the post so that they can start getting designs going. We asked them to give us a proposal. Under the referendum, we budgeted approximately 8.5% of the referendum money for architects' fees, for design services, for our administrative services, things to that nature. I'm happy to say that after working with them and so forth, based on each project, because that's how we, that's how they had to work on it, based on each project, it's going to range from 6.8% to 7.5%, well under what I, we budgeted for the project. So whatever savings we can get there, of course, goes back into the project with, that's what we always want. So I would like to just say that we would like to move ahead, move forward with the vote of bringing on Cunningham Group to design our several 42 projects as we move forward along with assistance and the deferred maintenance. Any questions?
Go ahead, Joe.
You might have the same question as I do. Could you kind of speak to the contract that we have in front of us? Not every single page, every paragraph?
Sure. I can do every page if you want to.
Just how it's formatted, I got the sense that this was a, more of a template, template from AIA and we're using it for our purposes. But how did, how did we review it and how does that process go?
So what you have in front of you is a, is a template of the AIA, which their normal district, because of the fact that the Cunningham Group as well as other architects, when they work with the districts, they have a format that, that they've used throughout the state of Minnesota and this is the one that we have. What we want to do in, inside there is just to make sure that people understand that once they're hired, they're given, we, we put a certain percentage in every category. I, example, if you go to one of the pages, you'll see how the money is going to be divvied out and that's what, we want to make sure that's why we use this AIA document, because it tells that 15% will be used for schematic design, 30% for design development and so forth, and so forth and so forth, which equals 100%. How it was reviewed by the district itself, these are, this is a contract that has been given to this district in the past from other architectural firms, firms like ATIS, AS, ATSI. AS, ATS I, and Wold, and others, so that we, we just mainly just use the generic one that the state has. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Do we work with our lawyers at all to do it, or do we just do that directly with the Cunningham?
We work directly with, with the Cunningham Group, again, but we use the standard template that all, all school districts use, so I guess the opportunity to review it with our attorneys, it's, it's up to you, but it is a standard template that we've used throughout the district and, in the past.
Karen.
Tom, is this the type of contract that you've had use of throughout your career, not just with our district? So, this is a pretty standard way of...
Correct, correct.
...organizing it?
Yes. Yes, for 30-some years I've worked, this is the type of AIA contract we used, and it protects us, because it makes us an additional shirt.
And I know that we have a construction manager. I just want to make sure, and I see that they're listed in here, but there's proper integration and responsibilities between the, because if you didn't have a construction manager, I think architects pick up some of that work, if it was like a smaller project, so I'm just wondering that we've...
Well, the way, the way we have set it up is, the reason why you see Kraus Anderson on there is because the agreement is that they have to partner with them, they have to make sure that they meet the standards that we put in place, and they have to also make sure that we meet the budgets. So, Kraus Anderson, working as an agent for me, we're going to keep them in line and in task, so that we get what was promised to the community and the district, that good, great projects without going over budget because of design.
Anything further? All right, thanks, Tom. This will come up on our action agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the building design discussion. It says that Tom's going to present, but looks like Sarah, or maybe it's...
She's just helping.
Oh, sorry.
We're both going to do it.
It's a group project.
Got it, group effort, very good.
We're a team, team effort, and then we have extra team members tonight, because Mr. Marvel is here to make sure that my video will play.
We saw Wizard of Oz.
Superintendent Osi, members of board, my name's Sarah Thompson, I'm your Director of Communications and Community Relations, and I'm with Tom Bravo, who was here momentarily just a minute ago. We just wanted to give you a quick update of where we're at in this process. So, you'll notice we've got a new logo to identify that we've, we've taken yet another step in this process post-referendum. We are now learning design in action, as we move into programming, design, and eventually construction of this great work. Just a quick refresher, started way back in 2015 with the strategic plan, the mission and the strategy, based on facilities, and we've come a long way. We've, we've done a lot of work from strategic plan to learning design team, lots of feedback, lots of input. The school board spent a lot of time deliberating about what was the right way to move forward, and then, we moved forward into the bond referendum and the success there, and now we're ready to talk about programming and design. So, we've, we've celebrated a little bit earlier tonight, we're going to celebrate one more time and say thank you to the community for the unparalleled support. This is just fantastic, and we're so appreciative and excited to move this work forward. It is based on need, and I always want to bring this back to, to need and how we started this process, and really what we're focused on as we move this work forward. It's all about increasing enrollment, the fact that our facilities are aging, we need flexible spaces for next century learning. Technology grows by the minute, that's why we have Tom here tonight, to keep, keep helping us move this forward. And our schools is community centers, it's really a piece that makes St. Louis Park unique, and so how can we better adjust our buildings, program our buildings, so that beyond the school day, they're available to all residents? And so, I want to just give you a quick reminder of how this construction will work and what this timeline looks like. So, we have, at last count, 44 projects district-wide. I've, I've adjusted it to more than 40, because we, we, they seem to keep growing. We seem to be doing more and more work by the day, so I, it's almost a daily check-in between me and Tom to say, "Where are we at?" So, I've gone with more than 40 projects, and I'm just, I'm not going to go project by project tonight, but I want you to know that this presentation, as well as many others, we've kind of taken our roadshow on the road again. And so, Aston laced up his sneakers, as did Tom, and now, we're going back out to all of our school sites, our programs, back out in the community to say thank you, and to talk about what's next, what this looks like. And so, when we're on the road, we go deeper into each one of these projects, depending on our audience, and so, we do a quick overview and then dive a little bit deeper. And so, tonight, I'm going to go pretty quick, because you've seen me and heard me talk about these many before, but district-wide, there's many projects, high school has projects, and for each one of these projects, there's a team. So, 10 people, 15 people, depending on the project size and scope, are coming together to work on each of these, along with Tom, our architects, and our construction managers. And it's at the high school, it's at the middle school, I referenced district-wide, and we also have projects at our elementary schools, across the district, and at Central. Not to be forgotten is Lenox, we're also doing work there. And then, there's district-wide deferred maintenance, and that's really touching all of our buildings. So, everybody in the district will be seeing some sort of improvement. We've seen the timeline before, we keep getting a little more detailed with it each and every time, you'll see another iteration of this come forward in the coming weeks, as Kraus Anderson really takes a look at it and starts to really plan, how can we do this work? We're, we're pretty sure that it looks like this, but we're going to get each time a little bit more finite in our detail, and that will be helpful. We're now forming our design teams, as I referenced, principals have invited staff members, they're applying, principals will be picking the teams, so that we get the right people with the right expertise in the room at the right time. We'll be doing meetings throughout programming, design, and construction phase with these design team members. It's a lot of meetings. Tom's calendar is, is a little bit crazy these days, and so, we're doing our best to get everything scheduled in. There will be lots of opportunities for input, so whether you're a staff member, parent, a community member, not only do the design team members represent you, and you can go person-to-person and talk to them on that level, but we will also have listening sessions and other opportunities for input during the design development phase. And so, this is when you'll see some more detail come forward about the projects, and a chance for really everybody to weigh in internally, in terms of stakeholders, as well as externally. We'll be communicating, you'll hear from us at least once a month from the school board table, as well as we'll have ongoing updates in our regular channels, from social media to website, things like that. And you'll also see just traditional communications as well, printed newsletters, those who received the new community education catalog would have a nice four-page spread in there that talks about what's next and how does that work. So, you'll continue to hear a lot of information about these projects, as well as, very soon, you will hear information about groundbreakings, because this work starts right away, so that's super exciting. While this is all going on, so this is over $100 million worth of project work, I wanted you to know, and it's really important to know, that you're also going to be hearing from us about some other planning and programming that will be happening alongside this work. We'll be looking at naming, as PSI moves over to the Cedar Manor school site, what is the right name for that school? As well as, now we have Central Community Center, what's the right name for that? Should it be Central Community Center, should it have a different name? So, we're looking at that. Because we're moving our students around in the district, we'll be looking at bus routes and start times. You'll also hear from us talking about packing and moving, different procedures for that, furniture standards of, is that the right chair that we should have for guests throughout the district? What should desks look like? What should tables look like? Things like that. These are the areas we know of today, I'm certain that other things are going to come up as we go through the process. Whatever good things we build end up building us is a fantastic quote that leads us into this next phase of work. So, hopefully, we've given you a picture of kind of what's coming in the next few months, and with that, Tom and I are available to answer any questions you might have.
The answer?
Yeah, I just, great amount of work, there's a lot of work to do, and it's exciting work. One of the most important things in terms of priorities, from my point of view, is the Peter Holbarts secure entrance. So, I'm hoping you're going to tell me that that is one of the first things we're going to be able to deal with, and that's my question, because I didn't hear that detail in this presentation.
Yeah, there's a meeting set up for either this week or next week to start the design of Peter Holbarts entrance, so we, our intent is to get it started next summer, just because of the fact that we will be putting air conditioning in that building, so that building will be down, that's the best time to do something like that, along with the air conditioning.
So, that's this coming summer of 2018?
This coming, 2018.
Thank you. And my other, my other just comment, and I'm sure that you're already on it, but I'm hoping we're taking good before and after videos or photos, so that we can be kind of showing off what we're using the taxpayers' money to accomplish, in addition to eventually really fun open house parties.
Yes, we are, along with the construction manager, that's one of their roles and jobs, is to take before and after, and to actually do a building on it, so that it helps us whenever there's issues that someone may say in, in the future, "I thought this wall had this, and this, and this," we're going to film every little piece of it for the record of the district.
So, could you talk about what the design teams will be doing, like who, who's going to be involved, and how you go from, well, let me, I'll just say my concern.
Mm-hmm.
Cut to the chase here. I'm, I said I'm just going to say my concern, I'm going to cut to the chase. So, we've got a schedule, we want to stay on schedule, we've planned all this out, people were very supportive of this, we should listen to them, we should get their ideas, but I worry about a lot of ideas coming out, and trying to focus on what we're trying to get done and getting it done. So, could you kind of talk to me about how the design team works, and how they're going to work to consensus and stay on schedule? Without dictating?
I could tell you the design part of it, and then Sarah can probably tell you how the community's going to stay engaged. The way we set up is we met with all the principals, and we gave them each one of their, their packet of projects that are going to be doing. We gave them criteria, we're saying that we need such and such people that, that we know that should be engaged to a project. Example, the Performing Arts Building, that we're going to be adding on. We want to make sure that the, the right members are part of the design team. We've also, along with, again, the Cunningham Group, we've hired a company called Schuler &amp; Shook, who does 95 percent of theatrical and orchestra-type additions to the districts throughout the state of Minnesota, so they come in with a wealth of knowledge of, based on our budgets and so forth. So, along with that process, we'll be starting in January, and for most of these bigger projects, it's going to take eight months to get the design done, before we go out for bid, and we will be going out for bid sometime a year from now, for the following year, when we'll be starting most of these big projects. So, in that process of the design, we'll be doing in blocks, so schematic, like I said, early schematic design has two meetings. After that, with the people that were selected by the principals and, and others, we will then have come to Sarah and say, "Okay, now we're ready to just let the community know what we're doing and how we're doing it, and what's, what kind of design that's coming out of it." And then, if we have some feedback that maybe is interesting, in the sense that it may be better to look at that, we will kind of incorporate it. Once we get past the scheme, design development, which is the next phase, that's when we start putting more details into it, and that'd be somewhere around March, April of next year. Then, we will go, come back again, again, one last time to say, "Hey, this is what we have, this is what we're doing, community," you know, just what this, just kind of give them for your information and so forth, because once we're done with the design development piece, then we go into construction documents and specifications, and when we're there, that's when actually, everything just gets hard-lined and ready for regulatory agencies. We already talked to the city of St. Louis Park, and they've called us several times already, and said, "When are you ready for us to review plans?" So, they're excited about it. We talked to State Fire Marshal, we talked to the, the watershed division, many, many regulatory agencies that we have to talk to, and that would be sometime next summer that we, we get to them, and once we get to that point, then we're, we're there. But in between the process, Sarah has said that we will engage the community in what we're doing, so that they know what's going on with the money that they approved. And any additional feedback, I guess we'll be happy to, to take, but I think I'll let Sarah add on that piece of it.
I'll hop in here. So, the, the two kind of major projects, in terms of where does the 100.9 million go, are middle school and high school, and Cedar Manor kind of falls under that, and then early childhood and early learning programs. So, middle school and high school will have their design teams, and I believe there's...
Oh, a lot of them.
We, we need to learn our numbers a little bit better, you can quiz us next time. Multiple teams at each site for all of these different components. At each site, there will be an overarching team that will also include parents and invested community members. They provide oversight, they provide connection, they provide communication to internal and external stakeholders, they kind of work in the space in between, they ask questions, they share information, and they're a conduit, kind of back and forth between internal and external stakeholders, asking questions, doing checks and balances, things like that, to make sure that all of the information that has gone into it so far, and any questions that come up during the process, are answered immediately. I've likened this to a game of Tetris, in that we move one square, so that another square can move, and as soon as that square moves, we move another square. And Tom and I will be working lockstep to make sure that input is received in a timely manner, so that it can be relayed to the design team to move the work forward. So, we'll be layering that in as a project team, and that'll go all the way through design and construction, so all the way through, so we can address things in design of, gee, I heard you were talking about blue chairs, I think we should talk about green chairs, just as an example, as well as, once we get into construction, of, you know what, you moved the entrance over to the west side of the parking lot, now we can't get in to allow, drop off our kids in the morning, can we move that to the east side? So, all of that kind of problem-solving work, as well as input work, will flow through these teams and flow back and forth between myself and Tom, as well as the architects and the construction manager.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense than what I, I had this vision of what it could be, and what you have described as much more organized, much more of a feedback and organized input method that is within the construction timeline and plan. So, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Other questions you would have for either me or Tom?
I'm just wondering if you're going to be able to get student input on, on some of these things, too?
Absolutely. So, the superintendent convenes the superintendent's advisory council, and they are our go-to, as kind of the, the one place where we convene students at a regular basis, that we use for input as well as feedback, and we'll be doing other things, we'll be working with Lisa Green and the Youth Development Committee, we'll be doing a lot of different things. There's also some interest at the high school level of tapping into some design classes and things like that, so we'll be working at a lot of different levels to bring in that student input.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
And I like the process designed. Okay, next item on our agenda, lease purchase of staff laptops. Tom, the man behind the curtain... Tom, the man behind the curtain comes forward.
Board members, Superintendent O'Sai, I'm, I'm here today presenting to you a lease purchase agreement for staff and teacher laptop refresh. We try to adhere to about a five-year cycle of life for computer equipment for our staff and our teachers is, obviously, if that is funds allow. Those of you who've been on the board for a little while may have seen something like this come before you in the past. We kind of got out from underneath the lease agreement as we came up to the renewal part of our technology levy in and around 2014 as we didn't want to have commitments there while we were waiting to find out if our levy would be renewed. Now that it is renewed and we're coming up on a refresh cycle, we're looking at this as a financing vehicle to get a large purchase of and refresh of devices in our district. We had some options to go out a little further to a four-year agreement or along that line, but we've been kind of planning for this throughout our, with funds from our technology levy. So we looked at the upfront payment and two years after that as, as a feasible cycle of payments for us and also keeping the interest down on the lease purchase. So we've actually, we're increasing the number of laptops in the district as more and more of our staff are moving to mobile devices as opposed to a fixed workstation. So support staff, obviously, teaching staff across the district. So there's a little bit of contingency built in here as well for machines to have on hand as things tend to happen and we need replacements immediately, so. So I have presented to you in your packet of the the numbers of 550 laptops and kind of the breakdown of the payment schedule. So any questions you may have for me regarding this lease purchase?
So this is budgeted stuff that was from the technology levy?
Yep.
Which I'm guessing our balance is healthy, given property values, so maybe there's some... Okay.
Yeah, planning for it. We actually have a fund balance from the previous year that we are looking at, hoping to make one of the payments out of this. So the other piece that I didn't mention is, one of the reasons we're moving forward with this in the current year, so we, we hope to take possession of the equipment in January, start the rollout this year, so all of our staff are walking out by the end of the school year. They're walking out with the new equipment. We're going to be taking the, the vast majority of the equipment that we're bringing in and reselling it and getting residual value out of that, which is fairly significant. So we're going to take advantage of that to recoup value out of that equipment.
And again, this is all staff, computers, so it's just separate. Okay. Any other questions, Tom? All right, this will come up later. All right, thanks, Tom. Okay, next item on our agenda is the WMEP Notice of Withdrawal. Superintendent O'Sai will present on this agenda item.
Chair Yarosh, members of the board. The last time we were together on this topic, I believe, was in October. And at that time, board members gave me some direction around next steps that would need to occur just to learn more about potential implications for withdrawing from the West Metro Education Program. So in response to the, the direction that you've provided, I went out and learned more about, around the financial impact of us withdrawing from the West Metro Education Program. Sandy Saline has interacted with the business manager at West Metro Education Program. And what we've learned as a part of that interaction is that there would not be any financial implications outside of the, what we owe for our membership this school year. In addition to that, there was also some direction provided by the board regarding the need to learn about other potential partnership opportunities, understanding that we receive money through Achievement and Integration Resources. And those, we get those dollars because of our partnership with racially-isolated school districts in the WMEP Consortium. Since the last time we've talked, in October, I've talked to several different districts. A couple of districts adjoining that have a great deal of interest in partnering with the St. Louis Park Public Schools. So this evening, I will be asking that the board approve our request to withdraw from the West Metro Education Program effective June 30th, 2018. I have had conversations with the executive director of the West Metro Education Program. The executive director understands our reasoning, reasoning and rationale for our request to withdraw. And I, again, as I stated a few seconds ago, I'm, I'm very confident about our ability to maintain high-level professional development programming for our staff in the area of, of race and culture. And I'm confident that we will be able to partner with an adjoining district around student programming to meet the requirements of the Achievement and Integration statute. What, any questions for me?
Any questions? Karen, anything to add? Karen's our rep.
I, I just think a lot has changed with WMEP since the two schools were conveyed. And as needs have changed in our school, I think we're moving along at a faster clip than other districts are, especially with our racial equity coaching model. And so I have complete confidence in Superintendent O'Sai's ability to create partnership and collaboration that will help us achieve some of our strategic goals a little bit faster.
Yeah, oh, Joe?
So this, this is written up as our intent to withdraw by June 30th of 2018. And from what you've just said, that is our intent.
Correct.
Is there, do you feel like there is anything that WMEP can do in the interim that would get us to stay? That's all, that would be more aligned with our mission, that would be aligned to, to the goals of it?
Well, I appreciate the question. Thank you for that, and I appreciate you calling out the distinction in language there because as a part of the joint powers agreement, we do have the opportunity to rescind this notice of withdrawal prior to June 30th if we so choose. And I think there are a number of factors that will play into that type of decision. Based on some of the interactions I've had, there will be, I, I think I'm safe in saying that we're not the only district who is taking this action at this point. And, you know, Karen may be able to speak in a little more detail, but I'm, I'm believing that there will need to be larger conversations just about the viability and future of the organization. So to your question, what would they need to do? I think it's going to depend a lot on what remains after December 30th as it relates to people that are intending on staying in the future.
Thank you. Yeah, it's after October and what, you know, and our observation, having Karen's reporting, it just seems like we're protecting our options. It's good to do right now. We have the opportunity to rescind, but again, I think the big concern is the viability, I think. And then, and the good news is that we could end up, I think we're, you know, one of the reasons we stayed there, if you recall, is Rob saying how great they, they provided certain training and professional development. I just think that it seems like we're going to be able to find something really good.
Certainly.
Among other, people are going to be searching for partners, and I just think that we'll have some good opportunities.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and we can still access, one of the things I want to mention is that as a non-member district, we can still access professional development through WMEP, just at an increased cost. But as we think about how much we're spending with them, it would be much less than what the overall number is that we currently spend with WMEP.
Aston, will we also, Karen, am I right that it was through WMEP that our students went on that love, that civil rights journey? And they spoke to us, and it was just such a phenomenal experience. Will we still have access to that if we withdraw from WMEP?
Yeah, so we would certainly still have access through that. We would pay a non-member district rate. But as part of some of the partnerships that we're exploring with other potential districts, there will be, I think there's some opportunity to explore what that can look like. I think as the last time I was with you, I've mentioned that we currently have capacity on staff. So we have staff members that have worked with WMEP to help design the curriculum and programming for those civil rights research experiences. So we could potentially purchase that opportunity through WMEP, or we could partner with another organization and design it, being that we have the capacity here on staff to do so. I think the only other thing that I'll mention that I failed to mention is that we have, I have been in contact with the Minnesota Department of Education regarding the Achievement and Integration Revenue. And Dr. Ann Parks, who oversees the Achievement and Integration Revenue, was very clear about, you know, there is not any binding reason why we would need to stay in a consortium and that some of the ideas that we are currently exploring would be totally acceptable by the Minnesota Department of Education.
Your point is, we're not at risk of losing the funding we get, the integration revenue. We're going to put it to good use. Could be, you know, maybe in all likelihood better than what's going on in the past.
That's the plan. Yeah, that's the plan.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Next item is the final levy certification. Sandy Saline?
I know this will be a repeat since we did the Truth in Taxation, but for the viewing audience that have not seen that, I'm going to do a quick version of it. Maybe I'll do a quicker version by using Elmo. As I stated at the Truth in Taxation earlier, we are required every year to bring to the board final levy certification by December 30th and have it approved. These are the levies that, the levy certification that we would like to prove and approve. And what this document does is it compares our current payable 2018 levy certification to our prior year's payable 2017 levy certification and shows the increases and decreases that have existed. Looking at this, and I'm not going to go through everyone by all means, just some of the items, just to explain some of the increases. Our operating referendum did increase slightly from the prior year, and we do have an inflationary factor in our, our referendum, which would explain that, as well as there was a prior year operating referendum adjustment, which we had a conservative review on our enrollment, since this is a two-year in advance projection. So therefore, we did have an increase. Prior year, we actually had a decrease, so that inflates that increase a little bit more. Looking at some other items down, the long-term facility levy is something that the state Minnesota Department of Education actually legislation increased that levy slightly. And a tax increment financing, we actually had a decrease in what we had to pay out for it, which shows as a increase, but it really isn't something that we actually, as a district, get any funding for. It's just a flow-through for the city that goes in and out of our tax levy certification. So all in all, looking at the total general fund increase, it's at 1.97 million. And looking at the community ed portion, that was pretty much stable. 570, 5,0778,000 increase is all that was, so it's pretty much stable from the prior year. The debt service, that's where our levy, referendum levy is reflecting that increase. So we show a 3.676 million dollar increase in, in that line item. Therefore, when you get to the grand total, the majority of that being the debt service at 5.674 million. So with that, this will be as an approve, item for approval for the board tonight, and this is our recommendation to approve.
Okay. Any questions?
I just want to, maybe you said this, Jim, but we had our Truth in Taxation hearing at 6:30 and nobody came. So whatever that means, I think it's good.
I'm hoping so.
All right. Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Resolution for Election Combined Polling Places. Superintendent O'Sai is going to present on that topic.
Chair Yarosh, members of the board, I'll be very brief. As, so we currently, I want to first start off by saying we currently do not have any combined polling places. The reason for this resolution is that a new election law in 2017, during the legislative session, required school districts to approve a resolution to combine polling places. And this is something that must be approved each December, so this will be something that we will do annually. And again, I, I just want to repeat, we currently do not have any combined polling places. The city has already submitted to the state our polling places for 2018 in which none of them are combined. So again, this is just an annual resolution that we will approve, and it came out of 2007, this 2017 legislative session.
Is that like combined, like precincts combined? You have two precincts voting at the same place?
Yeah.
And we have, I think we have, what, 18 precincts?
And I think that, whatever. I think it's in the resolution.
But we have a spot for each precinct.
Yeah, we have 16, yeah. We have a spot for each precinct, correct.
Thank you.
Any questions?
All right. Thanks. We'll take that up and vote it on the action agenda. Okay, next item is policy development, first reading. Policy 427, workload limits for certain special ed teachers. Superintendent O'Sai? I didn't see any red on this one, so I don't know that MSBA is recommending any changes.
Yeah, so Chair Yarosh, members of the board there. This is a policy that is required to be updated annually. The last time we updated it was June, May of 2015. So we are getting it in front of the board for review and approval to, to make sure that we're in line with the, it's just one of the MSBA mandated policies.
Oh, Tammy?
I was just going to chime in and indicate that here we do have the, the caseloads work within those, those parameters. And particularly, students who have significant needs that are in a setting-three program, they're lesser numbers, along with the more burdensome IEPs, they're just so much thicker and such for the case manager to work on the indirect model. So we've had that in place long before the, the process was required of us.
Great, thanks. We're in compliance with the actual policy is the good news. And maybe the slightly bad news is we hadn't quite updated this annually, but we will be there tonight. And then someone ought to talk to either the legislature, the MSBA, to have all these annual, required annual review policies. It's starting to get maybe a little burdensome on our timing and our agenda, so tough to keep up. But in any event, any questions? We're in compliance, and we will be in compliance timewise after this eve, or I guess next week, or next meeting. This will come out for a second reading and approval at the next board meeting, I assume. Okay, hearing done. The next item is policy development, third reading. 612.1, Development of Parental Involvement, Title I Programs. And I think we have a answer to a question on that. And then the second reading of, of Policy 533, Wellness.
Chair Yarosh, members of the board, Policy 612 dot 1, the Title I Development Policy, Family Engagement Policy. There was a request or question that was brought up at the last meeting around adding the term guardian to the policy. We did receive word from our, our legal counsel that the word guardian can be added to that policy. So upon your approval this evening, if that is something that you want to move forward with, we can get that language added to the policy. In addition, at our last meeting, there were some additional questions just around how we're currently implementing this. So this evening, I've invited Frida Bailey, who oversees our Title I funds and is available to answer specific questions that you may have about the implementation of this policy.
All right. Anyone have any question? Are you, did you want to present a little something, or do you just answer? Any questions? Okay. Questions, okay. Go ahead, Karen.
Frida, we are really glad that you're here with us tonight, and appreciate all that you do for our students and families. So I understand that we've been doing the process that is required of the policy through your work, and some of the things that I think you've done in the past have been focused on our Native American students as a focus group, if you will, but then how do we broaden our student contribution to how we make this policy work for them, and trying to get more of the student voice in there?
All right, thank you for asking the question, it's a good question. So when I'm looking at first the policy, it's talking about the Title I, and so with the Minnesota Department of Ed, it provides a frame for me to make sure that we're following our federal guidelines, because we do receive federal funds from the department. And with the frame, it states that it gives us this template that we follow, sort of like when we do the World's Best Workforce, it gives us a template for that. And with the template, it states that we have the District Title I Family School Community Plan. This is something that's becoming new due to the Every Student Succeeds Act. So it's changing from the No Child Left Behind Act, which we had the family engagement component. And with that, it's making sure that we are implementing various components to our plan, and one of those parts is making sure that we do have not only our families, but also the community and our students as well. So with that, in the past, what we've done, let's say for instance, you did mention the American Indian students, our families, what we've done, I've worked with various members in our districts, such as our Director of Teaching and Learning, or our liaisons, and we would meet with our families just to kind of hear what they had to say. With that, they would also bring their student, their children with them, and in those meetings, we would just sit and just have conversations about what, what is it, what's missing, what do you feel that we need to do in the district in order to make sure that you are seen? And with that, we heard that the books that the students are reading, they didn't see themselves in the books, they didn't see materials that were displayed around the classrooms, and with also, we were able to provide something that's really unique this year, and that's, we have an instructor, we're collaborating with the community, community ed, and there are free videos that this instructor is working with to provide the community. Now, this is the community collaboration, where they can see Trail of Tears, Broken Knee, Black Indians, and that's giving that community feel for this group. That would not have occurred had we not had that sit-down conversation with not only the families, but the students. I was able to meet with a group of students here, just to talk about what does it feel like, and that invisibility, and how can we make you feel visible? And we also gave those fifth graders an opportunity to have a conversation with other students in the building, because they didn't know that there were other Native or Indigenous students in their building as well. And so having them have that conversation with their families, just to kind of sit, have a conversation about who are you, what's your tribe, that gave them another sense of purpose and community, so that when they moved to transition to the middle school, they would see someone that they made that connection with at their elementary site. So throughout the process, we do make sure that not only do we meet with the fam, the parent or guardians, we also make sure that we sit down and have conversations with the students, because they are the ones that are going to give us the best information as far as the curriculum, as far as what's happening in the buildings, to make sure that we're putting those things in place for them.
Another thing that I think has been really helpful with the collaboration with community ed is, I've noticed that we have staff who are required to do continuing education units, and so those are really effective, and not only effective in terms of our work with racial equity, but, but cost-effective and convenient when, when we bring that programming right in our own spaces. So thank you to the two of you for collaborating on that, I really appreciate that.
And I do want to thank community ed, one of the things that we're getting from this also is data from the members that are participating. There, she's, I can't remember her name, but she's providing, she's going to get me, I know, but she's providing just information about once they, the number of members who are attending the videos, and then they provide feedback afterwards, and she's capturing all of that information as to how they feel about the videos, and, and out of a 0.5 scale, everyone is like a 4.5, 4.7, so the community is loving what's happening with that, and so there's also some more pieces that will occur in January, starting January, so there's more to come, which we're really excited about.
All right, any other questions? We will be voting on this, Frida. Thanks for coming this evening, appreciate it very much. All right, so, that will come back later, moving on. Wow, we're at the consent agenda. Well, wellness. I'm sorry, got excited there. Second reading of 533 Wellness Policy. We are on the second read of that, that will also come on tonight's action agenda. Do we have anything to add to that, Superintendent Ossai?
Chair Yarosh, members of the Board, I don't have any additional information at this time. What was shared last month during the first reading was the additional information, as you'll see, that's outlined and read in the policy.
Yep, there were some changes, I think, where the Legislative, and so they adapted the policy to, right. So not a lot we can comment on that. All right? Now we're on to the consent agenda, thank you. So it's recommended that we approve this evening's consent agenda. Is there a motion? Moved by Jim, seconded by Karen. I didn't see any. All right, having a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes 6-0. We move on to our action agenda. It is recommended that the School Board approve the 2017 final levy certification as presented. Sandy has presented twice on this tonight, so going for the third time, any questions or comments on our final levy certification? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oops, sorry, good point, thank you. All right, does someone want to move the levy certificate? Moved by Joe.
Sorry?
Seconded by Bruce. Now, vote time, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, that passes 6-0. Next item is the architect contract approvals, recommended that the School Board approve the architect contract as presented. Tom had spoken about this. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any further comment? Other than they've, in my estimation, they've done a wonderful job to date in giving us options and presenting us, so I think we've been served well, and, and what Tom has said is, seems like we're, they're coming in under budget so far in terms of, at least what we budget for their services, so maybe they don't like to hear that, we better approve this now, so. All right, having a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes 6-0. Next item is the sale of referendum bonds. It is recommended that the School Board approve the sale of the referendum bonds as presented. All right, is there a motion to approve? Moved by Bruce. Seconded by Joe, we have a roll call vote, will the clerk take the roll, please?
Jim Benneke.
Aye.
Karen Waters.
Aye.
Bruce Richardson.
Aye.
Joe Tatalovich.
Aye.
Jim Yarosh.
Aye.
Nancy Gores.
Aye.
All right, that item passes 6-0. Okay, next item is the lease purchase of staff laptops. It is recommended that the School Board approve the lease purchase of staff laptops as presented. Okay, is there a motion? Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. This is also a roll call vote, the Chair will call the roll, please.
Jim Benneke.
Aye.
Karen Waters.
Aye.
Bruce Richardson.
Aye.
Joe Tatalovich.
Aye.
Jim Yarosh.
Aye.
Nancy Gores.
Aye.
That also passes 6-0, thank you. Next item, the WMEP notice of withdrawal, it is recommended that the School Board approve the resolution and letter of intent to withdraw from the West Metro Education Program at the end of June 2018 as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Karen. Seconded by Joe. Any further comment on this? Okay, this is also a roll, oh, yep, Joe.
I think this is the right, the right path for us, and I commend the administration, Nassan, and others for looking into this, and I know it's hard to pull away from something that's, that's done a lot of good for us, but we're seeing another path that's more aligned with our, our mission and the needs of our kids, and so thank you for doing all the work on, on that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and a roll call, the Chair will please call the vote.
Jim Benneke.
Aye.
Karen Waters.
Aye.
Bruce Richardson.
Aye.
Joe Tatalovich.
Aye.
Jim Yarosh.
Aye.
Nancy Gores.
Aye.
That passes 6-0. Next item is the third reading, policy development, third reading approval, Policy 612.1, development of parental involvement Title I programs, rename parent guardian and family engagement policies for Title I programs. Is there a motion?
I would like to make the motion, I passed along a couple grammatical changes to ask him to pass on to Cindy, but I'm making the motion.
Okay, Joe moves to approve, subject to some, some typos and the like. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim, any further comment? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes 6-0. Next item is, next item is the second reading, policy development, 533 Wellness Policy. It is recommended that the School Board approve the second reading, Policy 533 Wellness as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Karen. Seconded by Bruce. Any further comment on this? I know Ken had some positive comments last meeting, and if he were here, he would make it again, I think he likes how this is formatted, and how we're going forward on the combined wellness policy, so I'll make that comment for him. All right, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes 6-0. Next item, employment contract approval, technical employees, 2017, 18, and 2018, 2019. Rick, I assume you're going to present on this. Thank you.
Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent, we are bringing two labor contracts before the Board this evening. As you mentioned, we have a group of technical employees, it's about a five-employee contract. I would say basically refreshing, cleaning things up, and moving forward with a modest salary increase and some health insurance changes, and that's really about all on, on that contract. The, the other contract that we're bringing is the teacher contract, it's obviously our largest contract, it has the most employees and the most, the most impact on the overall budget. We included in the packet a summary of the tentative agreement with the teachers, I just wanted to say a couple things. It was, it was a good, long session. We met, starting in May, we had over 14 meetings, I believe, where we were hashing out language and changes, and we looked at some things in our community education groups who serve our adult programming, adult options, ABE, and EC, and then also the ECFE programs. And I would say that has kind of just me-toed along for a number of years, and hasn't been specifically looked at. We spent a number of meetings with our ABE group, we brought in the ABE teachers, we addressed some concerns, met with community education. I think our salary schedule is, you know, where it should be now, we made some changes to some of the other programs or programming items around career increments or rewarding teachers for advanced degrees in that area as well. Because the funding is so different than our K-12 program, you can't, you can't just do everything that is, you know, in the K-12 contract, but I think we made reasonable moves to reward those employees for their, you know, work with St. Louis Park over the years. So we're, we're very happy about that. Teachers also, I think, were creative, and trying to look at how do we make sure that we're competitive in the future, especially for hard-to-fill areas, and instead of having like lockstep placement on the salary schedule, we have some additional flexibility with the Human Resource Director and Superintendent having some discretion in hard-to-fill areas to make a competitive offer. So if we're trying to get a unique position like a school psychologist where there aren't that many, and, you know, our salary schedule doesn't match up exactly with wherever they're coming from, we have a little more discretion to make a competitive offer with this contract. So that was, that was, I think, very creative on, on both sides' parts. One thing I also wanted to mention for the Board, and this is a little unusual, almost always we have the union ratify the contract first, and once approved, we bring it to the Board for ratification here. In this contract, because our tentative agreement came relatively late on November 27th, and we only have this one Board meeting in December, we're asking the Board to approve the contract tonight. PAT and its bargaining team is recommending approval to its membership. They have a nice instructional video on the contract changes and a message to members. They started their, they started their voting already, they have over 200 people who've kind of early voted. They start their formal voting tomorrow and Wednesday, and they, they should have a vote count for us by no later than this Thursday, and we're looking forward to the teachers approving, ratifying the contract this week as well.
Any questions? Yes.
So Rick, was the PAT comfortable with our going first? Do they see any potential problem with that, since it's sort of out of the, it's different than our past practice?
Different than our past practice, and we, we met with them and talked this through with their bargaining team, and they supported it, because if, if we waited for them to ratify, their bylaws require a certain amount of time before notice and voting and that, they couldn't have voted until the 14th, which means then the next Board meeting would be in January, new rates wouldn't possibly be on the check until January 15th or January 30th, back pay then would be out into February. So by agreeing that it doesn't matter who votes first, as long as both sides vote, because ultimately it has to be by mutual agreement, we did also, just to confirm, went over this with, you know, our legal counsel, who confirmed, yes, it doesn't matter who votes first, as long as everybody agrees, and so this is a collaborative gesture to bring this to the Board tonight.
And it is a contingent approval, so for some reason it got rejected, you know, there's no contract, so.
Right, there's no contract, and then it goes back to the, back to the table.
Thank you, it was a, I know it was a longer process, we're happy to get it done before the break, I think it's, it's good for both sides, and I hope all parties are maybe, what's a good agreement was anyone, everyone's a little bit upset, there's no winner in the process then, and we found something that we can agree on, so that's always good. And it's, it'd be nice if we could ever get agreements that are longer than two years, that might be a little, allow for, for some harmony for some time, and, but that would take some legislative action.
Right, that would take legislative action. Currently, teacher contracts must be not more than Currently, teacher contracts must be not more than two years, and must be voted on in the, you know, must be concurrent with the odd-numbered year. So we are kind of stuck. Other contracts, we do have the flexibility to go up to three years, and we've actually done that with one or two of our contracts, to kind of move them off a cycle, so that we have some of our contracts on even years and some on odd years.
Again, thank you for all the hard work, and I know we had several meetings with the board, and we were kept apprised, and I think we all feel comfortable and aware of what the impacts are and going forward. And so glad it's on the agenda this evening, so... All right. Thank you. So the first contract is recommended that the school board approve the employment agreement, I think I read this already, between Independent School District Number 283 and the Technical Employee Group for the 2017-18 and 2018-19 school years as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Joe. Seconded by Karen. Any further questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes 6-0. Next item is the employment contract approval for the Park Association of Teachers 2017 and through 2019. It is recommended the school board approve the employment agreement between Independent School District Number 283 and the Park Association of Teachers for the 2017-18 and 2018-19 school years as presented. Again, this is a conditional approval. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Jim. Seconded by Bruce. Further questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes 6-0. And we will, you'll let us know the results, Superintendent Osai. Hopefully by Thursday. You said that'll be... Okay. So we'll know if we have a contract by Thursday or so. Next item, approval of resolution for combined polling places. It is recommended the school board approve the resolution for combined polling places as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Karen. Seconded by Joe. Any further questions, comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes 6-0. On to communications and transmittals. Karen.
Thank you, Chair Yarosh. I'd like to talk about Children First Asset Number 14, Adult Role Models. We have a phenomenal role model in our high school. Steve Schmitz is the band teacher. He's actually featured in the December City School District calendar. And at the concert last week, he made it a point of having the kids perform a piece of music called Armed Forces: Pride of America. And he's done this every year. It's pretty close to Pearl Harbor Day, but he has anyone who has served in the military to stand and be honored and recognized by the students and the community. And the kids did a great job performing the piece, and it's really moving to see the number of adults in the audience who stood for that recognition. So we thank them for the service, and I really thank Mr. Schmitz for continually making that be a part of his program. The other thing he's doing is working with the kids to support their colleagues in Puerto Rico. Some of you may recall that a couple years ago, the band and orchestra kids went to Puerto Rico for a trip. And they're in contact with their colleagues, and their programs were devastated by the hurricane. So Steve and his group, and he has students helping him, they've combed through our excess. They're going to be sending over some instruments to donate, and they are looking for cash donations to send over to Puerto Rico, as well as offset the shipping costs. So that is really important in terms of adult role models. But we have a really important Children First Asset, Number 26, Caring. And you, Jim Yarosh, and you, Bruce Richardson, have exemplified being caring members to our students and community. And I'm really proud to have served with you, and I can speak for myself, but I think everyone else will agree. But the community is also going to be recognizing your dedication and service with a reception on January 8th at 6:00 p.m. in the high school cafeteria. We would like everyone who's been impacted by your work, come out, have some cake, say thank you. But you exemplify Children First Asset 26, Caring, and thank you so much.
Anyone else? Joe?
To continue on that theme, and I'll keep this brief. I want to say, 9:15, I'll make it quick, and then we'll recognize in January as well. And that's when I'll give my long-winded speech about my colleagues here. So at the planning commission meeting last week, I was talking about the board and the board turnover, talked about the great new members that we're going to have coming on board. And I spoke to one of the planning commission members, and we started talking about Bruce. And he summed up Bruce in one word, and that was passionate. He said, "Gosh, Bruce is passionate." And I think we've seen it every single meeting, or I've seen it every single meeting for the last six years. And it just comes out, and it's so pure. You are always looking out for the kids, so it's been an honor to serve with you. And for Jim Yarosh, it's also been an honor to serve with you. The thing that I am just in awe of with Jim is his dedication. I know that he's, he grew up here, his wife grew up here, and he gets asked questions all the time, and he is never short with anybody. And I don't know how he does it. He gets asked questions no matter where he goes, and he is, it must be his lawyer training or a good upbringing, but he is very methodical and explains things well, and cares about the kids, and has done such a phenomenal job for the community so far. So I expect that to continue with Jim. Expect that to continue with Bruce, of course, but it's been an honor to serve with both of you guys.
Yeah, Jim and Bruce. Just going to, we're going to do this again on the 8th of January, but truly, you've been here 16 years, I've been here 14 years. I learned so much from you, both of you, when I came on the board, how to be a good board member, how to keep our focus on the kids, and improve, and making the school district to continue to be the best that it is. And I am going to miss you terribly. I'm excited about the two colleagues that are going to join us, who have been here in attendance for the past many months, but I, it's not going to change the fact that we're going to really miss you and your wisdom as we go forward. And we've been just so blessed to have you for so many years. So I'll look for you in Byerly's or Cub, or wherever you're hanging out these days. And just, I want to echo what Karen said, save the date. I don't know if you can get this, because I love these photos. I want this photo that's on the top here. Senator texted it to me, or email. Do what you can, because this is a great photo of Jim and Bruce. And the reception in the cafeteria is January 8th at 6:00. But up here at 7:00, pack the place, because we're going to thank them and give them a spotlight presentation.
Jim? I'll just keep it brief for now, too. I'll miss both of them. I got to know Bruce a long time before I joined the school board. I'll miss him. And Jim, as the newest school board member, I'll say he has tried to make me feel really welcome, and he encouraged me through, you know, learning the process and everything. Thank you.
All right. So, yeah, we'll save our comments for the 8th, but it's been a pleasure. So anyhow, seeing no other communications and transmittals, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Bruce. Seconded by Jim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes 6-0. We are adjourned.